Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting. The day is Tuesday, July the 20th, 2021. The time is now 6:00 P.M. A regular meeting of the City Council of City Trinidad will now come to order. Mr. Ray, would you please lead us in the place of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call vote, please.
Devono.
Here.
Goodall.
Here.
Griego.
Here.
Ogoltri.
Here.
Shu.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Rico.
Here.
It's also very good to see that we're able to have an audience here. It's the first time we've had other configurations the last few weeks, but this is the first time that we've all been able to set up here on the desk and have people in the audience. It's good to see people in the audience. Approval of the agenda? Any changes that council wants to make? No? Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second? Okay, first and the second? Call vote, please.
Devono.
Yes.
Goodall.
Yes.
Griego.
Yes.
Ogoltri.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes.
Item three, policy items and staff reports. Mr. Valentine, do you have anything?
Uh, no mayor, nothing to report at this time, but I know that you all met our new planner, Sky Talman, at the retreat. Just wanted to welcome him at a regular meeting because, you know, we finally, we got our man, so.
Awesome.
So, Sky, are you, you already full of beers and hens and everything?
I'm having a great time so far.
Good.
Thank you, everyone.
Needed very badly. Thank you for being part of the organization. Item four, petitions or communications oral or written. Uh, before I bring, do we have anybody to speak before I get the petition list? Uh, I got a letter and I think it was in our packet, Robert Arco. He, uh, gave us a short letter thanking the City of Trinidad for the fireworks display, which was awesome again this year, so I wanted to recognize Mr. Arco for his comment.
We used to do this, didn't we? You do that. It's bringing back. He said, "I'm sorry, I'll quit seeing what I'm thinking."
Here we have two people signed up. Janelle Beach, correct? Come forward, please. State your name as you come forward.
Janelle Beach.
And we have five minutes and Mr. Downs is usually our scorekeeper here.
That's right.
Are we ready to go?
Scorekeeper.
Hello and thank you for giving me a chance to share some thoughts. I'd like to add to the discussion about outdoor dining in Trinidad. I'm aware that there's been some controversy lately and I'm, my intention definitely isn't to add to it. I do have faith that we can design solutions that benefit everyone. As we continue to build up our community, welcome visitors to town and navigate a lingering pandemic, it's hard not to be in favor of some more outdoor seating. I love seeing my neighbors and friends outside when I'm on Main Street commercial. It's a welcoming feeling that offers a sense of home I have not found in other places I've lived in my life. Perhaps more importantly, it's a bit of a life raft to our small businesses who are working hard to keep our city's heart pumping during a global health crisis. I've spoken with the owners of Bella and their contractor, both of which express not only a desire to offer customers a place to come together in fresh air, but also continue to investigate ways to improve accessibility every step of the way. I know the ADA issue has been at the front of everyone's mind. As a woman who has fought serious mobility issues with a condition called dystonia, I am grateful that Trinidad has put so much thought into curbs and ramps and even just the one year I've been here. It wasn't that long ago that I needed assistance of my service animal to get around, so I know firsthand what these challenges can bring. I've also worked with councils for the blind, programs for physically and developmentally challenged youth and retirement communities around the United States. And I've personally helped friends who are wheelchair-bound gain entry into restaurants, concert halls, and other businesses that presented a collection of challenges that are rarely on anyone's radar. I most certainly understand the importance of this issue. Over the years, I've known plenty of strong and inspiring people in these tight-knit communities and support groups who dedicate their lives not only to advocate and educate, but many of them go as far as to help write legislation to improve the lives of those of us living with disability. Never have I seen nor imagined the Americans with Disabilities Act being weaponized quite like we've experienced in Trinidad lately. It is disheartening, not only because those conflicts create even more challenges for folks who already have to put in an unfathomable amount of energy into connecting with their communities, but also because it's putting unfair restrictions on our small business owners, our residents, and our visitors. I don't believe that restricting outdoor enjoyment in Trinidad is a cause that represents any of the disabled communities I've ever been a part of. Quite the contrary, in fact. I hope this council can help us navigate these challenges for what's best for our entire community. If the, I don't think the answer is if so much as how. How can we better coach businesses in building to code with inclusivity in mind? We have plenty of folks with the knowledge and skills to do things right. This town is special. It's growing. Our community is thriving and craving places to go, places to spend money, and attract tourists. I hope we can work together to create spaces for growth and togetherness. And for what it's worth, this asthmatic would love a couple more options to dining safely outside now the new strains of the virus are circulating. I hope you will vote in favor of allowing Bella Luna to build a patio that mindfully includes everyone. They're putting a lot of love and money into creating a space for us to enjoy, and they need your support. Avenue A can offer us so much more than an empty plant or box. It could be a space that inspires those passing through to get out of their cars and help us add to the vibrancy of Main Street. Anyway, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Pat Hollett?
Hi guys. Sky, welcome. Awesome, awesome that we have a planner. You guys have really worked hard without one for a long time. The communication I want to have with the, with the town council is communication. I actually think that sometimes where we're failing. To find things on Facebook, we all know that's not the place to have, like, good conversations.
Could you remove your hat, please?
Thank you. I know, um, I know when all of you run out in the community, every shirt you pull out of your closet probably has a target on it that somebody's looking at. Mike, I know that most especially for you, okay? It's really hard what you do. And having folks step forward and do what you do is really important. It's easy for somebody to throw something, but it's hard to sit there and do what you do. But I think where, where we're failing is we're failing in the communication. I understand executive session. I understand why you do it. But you need to come out of executive session with some idea to share with the community of what happened there when you represented the people that you represent. I find there's a failing with communication. And the failing in communication actually has people create stories. Storylines come from that. Miscommunication comes from that. And actually, discommunication comes from that. And so what I would really like to see our council do is I'd like some more leadership in communication. What happened, quite frankly, with the ADA and with Moose's, in my mind, there were other paths that one could have taken. Most of them based on communication. To me, it was disheartening to see real, two really valuable members of our community to me disrespected. Not that there wasn't real issues with the ADA and not that maybe the, when the town decided to put those patios out there, that maybe the foresight of what would happen in the future wasn't going. The ADA is 30 years old. And to me, the town has been very negligent in catching up with things we should catch up with. 30 years. The town put those patios out there. The town took pictures of those patios out there. And the town rejoiced in the ability to have outdoor dining. Now, what Bella Luna is doing, by the way, awesome, love it. Bella Luna is doing is actually where we're going as a community. Other communities have figured out how to deal with the ADA. The ADA isn't an enemy. The ADA is an invitation to other people in our community to actually partake in all the things in our community we got behind. Now, if somebody had gone to, at least in my reckoning, again, I'd go off of the most bad information possible because I get it from Facebook. I get it from Facebook because I don't get it from my town council. And it should not be imperative for me to come to these meetings, especially when we've been in a lockdown, in order to get information. I really implore you to have better communication with the folks you represent. These are jobs you have. These are responsibilities that people empower you with. And the lack of communication, quite frankly, is disheartening. And I would really like to see that when you go in executive session or you decide on something, that some communication of the people you serve is, is put out there. My understanding is there is a communication person in the town. Again, kudos for the great work you guys do. There's no communication coming up. Don't create a position that doesn't have a function and the ability to move forward and fulfill that position.
One minute, Mr. Hollett.
So what I would ask you guys to do is, uh, when you have good members of your community that have actually done great things in your community, don't be dictatorial with regards to enforcing something that is decided in a closed-door meeting. Go talk to them. Howard and Nancy could have been talked to. There are solutions to this ADA challenge. None of these challenges, again, invitation. So I would love for the council to actually do more with regards to stepping up the communication direct with the folks they serve and move forward in that manner. I think it serves you best. I think it serves the community best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't forget your hat, Pat.
It wasn't Trinidad's state hat.
Pat, the only I want to mention real quick is that if you want an explanation as to our executive sessions and sometimes we come out without any, just anything, just, because we, we can't decide anything and exactly what we have to do can discuss, but that's it. I would recommend that you talk with our attorney and he can explain to you the process.
No, I, I actually, I've been a mayor of the town. I've been in that. And since you, since you said that, I'll take another 30 seconds. Yeah. And this is why we don't. This is why you don't do that. But, but it's happened. Go ahead, go ahead. It happens. So I understand, Mayor, pushing people off to someone else to talk to is not a solution to a situation. It's not an answer to a question. I chased down Mike for five times about the ADA issue that I brought up before. Made three appointments, was there five times, never got a chance to talk to this fine man that I actually think would have talked to me. Sending someone to someplace else to talk about something is less than saying, "I can't talk about anything about the executive session."
Okay, that's all that we had signed up? Item five, consent agenda approval. Approval of the regular meeting minutes of July the 6th, 2021?
Mayor, may I interrupt a second?
Sure.
Do we have anyone that is online that may want to speak since we are still doing online?
Well, that's true. I didn't think of that. Anybody online that wants to speak? Go ahead. Go ahead, please.
Can I go ahead?
Yes.
My name is Santina Frank. Um, I work at Trinidad State College. My husband is Dave Frank and he owns Frank Gimitas. And we both believe that the seating, um, that outdoor seating for Bella Luna would just be a great asset to that area of town. And, um, we, we're generally in favor of that.
Okay. Anyone else online that would like to speak? Okay. On to item five, consent agenda approval. Approval of the approval of the regular meeting minutes of July 6th, 2021. Item B, appointment for John Armio to the Planning, Zoning and Variance Commission. Mr. Armio, are you with us tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Item six, appointment of Derek Thomas to the Historic Preservation Commission. Mr. Thomas, is he here? Okay. Approval of the bills for $4,496,863.30. Item E, approval of the payroll, July the 10th, 2021 through July the 23rd, 2021, in the amount of $411,948.46. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call vote, please.
Devono.
Yes.
Goodall.
Yes.
Griego.
Yes.
Ogoltri.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes.
Item six, in public hearings, we have none tonight. Item seven, unfinished business, we also do not have any. Item eight, miscellaneous business. ADA consideration of revocable permit agreement requested by Bella Luna LLC. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second? I second that. Okay. Uh, I understand, Ms. Nichols, you wanted to, uh, talk to the council?
Um, I feel, I feel like I, you know, we try not to, like, pack the house and not warn you guys with, you know, um, a lot of zooms and stuff. But I feel like I've probably expressed myself enough and won't take up any more of your time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Downs?
Okay, thank you, Mayor and council members. I, um, as you'll recall, this has been the subject previously of a work session and, uh, the council briefly discussed this matter back during that work session. But I do have a prepared statement that I would like to read to council. I didn't want to overlook anything, so I wrote this down. And if you would please just indulge me for a moment while I read this. In consideration of this application for a revocable permit for Bella Luna LLC, I'd like to bring a few considerations to the fore. First, and perhaps this is leading with my weakest point, but council has not had a broad discussion about what to do with Alley A. With all due respect to this applicant, this location, council may want to have a discussion about what to do with this rather unique location. This proposal may not be the highest and best use of that location. If the application for a revocable permit is granted, you will have made that decision as what to do with Alley A. Second, you would think that what the city giveth, the city can taketh away. That isn't necessarily the case. You undoubtedly are aware of the difficulty we, we had with respect to a sitting patio in front of a local business recently. Even though that was our patio entirely on our property with a revocable lease agreement, we still had and are under the ongoing scepter of litigation for eventually removing our patio. And of course, we did what we did with respect to that situation to avoid other litigation under the ADA, which tends to be litigation that is much more costly and subjects us to more protracted litigation if we are considered to be in violation. So this proposal has the makings of a very difficult situation for the city. Should it be approved, the applicant would be spending their own money in what would arguably be detrimental reliance upon our granting of their revocable permit. They would have what they would believe to be a property right in that they would have sunk time, money, and effort into their proposed ramp platform configuration. I should emphasize here that because these sidewalks or alleys are city property, when we grant a revocable permit to have an outdoor patio, the business owner or owners are literally conducting their business on city property. They can get the city sued under the ADA if they don't help to ensure compliance with the ADA. If they run afoul of the ADA and ignore our warnings, all we can do is to revoke their permit or threaten to revoke the permit, which again becomes inherently problematic when you have an applicant like in this situation that thinks they have a property right and arguably, um, may have a property right if they have spent their own money in furtherance upon this, this permit. Here, if that happened, we would likely be told that we are doing our best to comply, that strict adherence to the ADA is too difficult. And if we remove the patio, or in this case, remove their improvements, we are liable to them at a minimum for the cost of the ramp platform configuration as well as for the loss of income potentially from the patio. It creates an expectation from a business owner to be allowed to continue to conduct business on city property regardless of the consequences to the city. It's an untenable situation for the city legally. My recommendation, therefore, is that you don't approve this revocable permit application. That's all I have.
Mr. Valentine, do you have anything?
No, Mayor, I do not. Several conversations down there and a visit to the Alley A. There are some concrete planners that were put in, in the seventies that, uh, have warned, warned their welcome. They're, they're now just rocks and trash containers. I've had, I have engineering looking at designing a new area in there, fixing up the, the bricks that are not ADA compatible because there's, you know, more than a quarter inch lift and rise, the concrete. There's some issues in there with adjoining property where they have a coal chute. I, I believe that's what it is there and stairs and, uh, their fire escape. So we're working through it in, with engineering to somehow create a space that can be used in the future as possibly a common dining area, but, um, so that's all I have, Mayor.
Let's go ahead and get some conversation with council. Mr. Williamson?
I, um, I really think that this is a important, um, issue for downtown, for the city of Trinidad, for, um, businesses, for the citizens, for people that have visited. We obviously have a huge responsibility to ensure that we're doing, making the best decision for the, the town, our constituents, um, and the city's, uh, fiscal liabilities. To be honest, um, I would be inclined to see that space, um, used in that manner. And I mean, it's really, it would be a huge improvement over what it is now. That being said, um, I, I strongly feel that we should potentially table this for, for further, um, discussion and investigation until, um, more, a more clear understanding can be made. I, I think to make a decision tonight would be hasty. And I know there was a work session on it, uh, that I was not able to be at. For that, I apologize. I, I did attempt to try and review that. It, it has not been posted yet. Uh, that being said, I, I feel, um, that I would like to see it tabled for, for tonight. That'd be my input.
Mr. Goodall?
Has Planning and Zoning looked at this? Or is this something that even went to Planning and Zoning and looked at where they stand on it or Georgie's input? They want as far as, was there anything that Planning and Zoning should have looked at? Nope.
I don't believe so. I'm sorry. They don't review revocable permit applications. It's a good question, but they don't, they don't look at those. So.
I mean, I'm, I am in favor of outdoor stuff. I mean, I was a big part in forming the entertainment district to push stuff downtown. I mean, I've just unfortunately feel that some of the stuff that's been put in place and some of the stuff we're wanting to do is maybe not the best places. And the timing on Alley A is not the best at all with our plans on redoing that alley, removing them planners, cleaning that up. With Mr. Chimino buying everything down the backside of it, it just makes this a really bad space to deal with. Our narrow streets downtown and commercial both and all, all that area makes it really hard to put in patios out in the street. Our sidewalks are not really wide enough for a lot of this stuff. I know we need a solution that's going to work for everybody. I just don't know what that solution is. Alley A is, I don't know that the shape it's in and the work we're looking to do at this time is the best place to try to put some outdoor seating, unfortunately. I think it is a great ideal. I would serve your business immensely. I love your business. I can't wait for it to get back open. I wish we had a better solution. I just don't know what that is right now.
But you guys don't even have a timeframe on when you're going to attack Alley A or redesign it.
That's, we're with council on, on council's comments? Anything else?
No.
Ms. Ogoltri?
Like Erin, I, our councilwoman Williamson, I was unable to attend the first part of that work session on June 28th and I tried to watch it online and it isn't available yet. So I'm not really sure what the discussion was at that time. There weren't any documents that were presented to us about what they wanted to do. So I feel like I am kind of flying blind. I, I think it would be better to have, um, the applicants provide us with additional information about what they intend to do and what work they put into seeing to that it can be ADA compliant. Because I, I don't think the ADA isn't designed to make things impossible. They're, it's designed to make things accessible. And I don't like the concept of the city saying, "Well, because it's difficult and because it might present challenges, that we shouldn't do that." I just disagree with that. I also disagree with something, the concept that we're putting together a revocable permit that we're giving to people to consider that says that it's revocable with 30 days' notice, with or without cause. So to me, they, they pay their money. They take their chances. And I think, you know, it's incumbent on us. I, from what I understand, that we get out there issues with compliance with the ADA once it's in place, but they know what they're getting into, I assume.
And I, and I did email all of you guys, apparently, which was a faux pas, um, our, our plans on what, and, you know, we were doing and just like drawings and how we plan on making it all fixed seating, so it will always stay in any.
It would be helpful to have that here now, rather than the way that you presented it. That would have been more helpful with that one. Okay.
And it was, it was part of the work session. It was material. Sorry, didn't want to interrupt.
Okay, it wasn't in our package.
I understand. You're right.
Um, all right, so I, I just think, you know, we put into contracts with people what expectations are and they should understand them. We should understand them. And we should, you know, follow through on them with what it says. On the highest and best use idea, I'm also kind of, I haven't heard anything to this point about Alley A. I've, I've not been aware that that's been something we've been really looking at. So if, if we do have some plans, let's get them out there and see if we can make the two things happen. That's an idea that we could consider. I don't think they're mutually exclusive, whatever the city wanted to do. But I don't know. I, I don't know if they are because I don't know enough about that. So, um, if I had my choice, like councilman Williamson, I would want to table it and get more information before we say yes or no.
Mr. Shu?
Yeah, well, it's a really tough discussion here. When I had, when we were at the work session, I brought up the point that if you were going to put that in, if it was portable, so that we could get the alley fixed and have that done. But I'm not sure if that's a proper solution either. But I think the, the most important thing is to get the alley fixed and get it done. And then, uh, and I'm, I know you made a point that we don't have any plans for it, but this just came up with you guys there with the issue. And I know we should have gotten that done. We had issues with a lot of things around town. So we're trying to work it out. But I would be in favor of, uh, trying to work with it and kind of work down this with, like Erin and, uh, both Erin's have said that, uh, we can delay this and work on it a little bit, try to make out a solution that would fit all of us. And if there's a way to make that portable, if we could tear it down and fix the alley or we can fix the alley and make it a common space, like you said, I think that would be a really good idea for everybody. a really good idea for everybody in that area. So, those are my thoughts. I, I'm not, I think it's a good idea. I like your pizza, too. So, I, I think if we could work something out, like you say, we need better communication, so we can do that.
Mr. Grego.
Ms. Beach, just, I agree with you. We need to find something for outdoor dining. But Trinidad is unique. We're an old city with a lot of issues as far as accessibility is concerned. Unfortunately, council and staff has been dealing with a major pandemic that we're still dealing with, and that hasn't really been the forefront. I remember many times that Mike and I have discussed possible ideas for shutting down Main Street on Friday nights and letting everybody go out there. You know, every solution has a challenge, but I am pro-business. I'm pro-restaurant. I'm pro-Moose's. And it's hard, this is not an easy place for me to be. But I was voted into this position, and I have not only your welfare, but the welfare of the citizens of our community, to do what's right, not only for businesses, but for every citizen that resides in this city. I have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that I don't do anything carelessly to put the city in harm's way. And that's my, that's my biggest concern. Like I said, your case is unique, Moose's was unique, and we're just going to have to work through these. Because they're unique, every situation is going to have a unique solution. And we are going to start working on this as far as outdoor dining. What you have to understand, and, you know, Mr. Howlett mentioned that we're being blasted on Facebook. Well, I know that. I had to go to the doctor for the backstabs in my back a couple of times, but I was voted to do what people trust me to do, and that's what I'm doing now. I, I have to take the higher road. I could have very easily gone back on Facebook and shouted back, but that's not my position with City Council. The citizens have trusted in me to do the right thing for them, and that's what I'm doing. And you have to also understand that when I, we give permission for outdoor dining, the next person that comes up and says, "Okay, I want part of city property to put outdoor dining," then we have another problem. It's either all, or in most cases, none. And for that, I just, it's just not good timing for you to put that patio in. Mr. Just, our Public Works Director, has already told us ADA is not, the slope on Alley Eight is not ADA compliant.
Well, let us fix half of it, then. That's what we want to do.
Do you know, Jeff, it is hard. You don't understand unless you're up here or down there what the planning process is for a project like this. I get frustrated, too, but we, it's the same situation, Jeff. I have to make sure that I'm doing the right thing for everybody. Can we address this in the future? Yes, we can. Maybe we, like, I don't remember who mentioned, leave Allier open, put chairs there, and let anybody who wants to take out, take out from a restaurant there. But we're taking away the use of city property for private entity. And when we do that, we're really going down a slippery slope, I think. But, you know, I think everybody on council, I'm speaking for myself, but I'm very pro-business. I own a business in downtown Trinidad, too. I've had my chemo just with access to, but, you know, I don't want you to fail. I didn't want, I don't want Moose's to fail, because that's what makes the community good, is when we have thriving businesses. But sometimes you've got to do the tough stuff in order to get to the right decision. So, therefore, I, I don't believe that we can grant you that permit at this time.
Let me just say real quick, nobody cares about Allier, not until I've brought this up. I hear all the people there...
Excuse me, Mr. DeBonner.
Well, yes, this is a problematic issue, and I agree with, I concur with a lot of existing county council members. I'm in favor very much of outdoor dining, but Allier is in dire need of repair and improvement, and it needs to be engineered and repaired and brought up to city standards and ADA compliance before any vote should be taken by council. That's all I have.
First of all, I, I do not get on Facebook for obvious reasons. Outdoor dining is a good thing. Outdoor dining is used in many municipalities and cities all over the state, all over the country. Here in Trinidad, we have one big problem in that our streets are pretty narrow, sidewalks are pretty narrow, and it's become very difficult to maneuver and be able to have ADA compliance as well as maneuverability. I took the opportunity, before we had our work session last time, I took the opportunity to go down and look at Allier and saw the condition that it's in. It's in very bad condition. And like what Ms. Grego said, is that we have the responsibility to make sure that the streets, sidewalks are ADA compatible. Unfortunately, that area is not ADA compatible, and I hate for somebody to put something in, and something happens, and then all of a sudden, we get hit with the Department of Justice, which is what we're dealing with right now. And a comment was made earlier that ADA is supposed to be our friend. I'll be honest with you, they are not our friend. They tell us what you have to, what we have to do, and there is no, it's black and white. There are no gray areas. Three years ago, there was a meeting, and we're, there was somebody there from the ADA, and because of what's been going on, I had some questions for the gentleman, because he was actually one of the ADA compliance officers. And I went up to him, and I said, "I'd like to speak to you about what's going on in Trinidad." He said, "First of all, I'm not going to talk to you about it." That is what the ADA does. And this came directly from the ADA guy that was in, that was in control at the time of this area. So, I mean, it threw me a blank. I said, "This guy, you know, just, they're not, they're not willing to work with you. It's just, it's black and white, there's, there are no gray areas." I really believe that, that Allier needs to be stripped completely down, needs to be brought up to whatever use it could be used for. And my recommendation would be for them to hold on to their plans, and at the point that we do something with that, if we get an ADA complaint, maybe we can take a look at it at that point. That would be around my recommendation, because I think at this point in time, it would just put us in a precarious condition of having to meet a DOJ settlement all over again, which is what we don't need. We've gone through it for the last, since I've been on council, the last six years, dealing with it, and it has not been fun, dealing with the ADA and the Department of Justice over the ADA, or the ADA compliance.
I think, can I point something?
Sure.
We've been notified that the ADA, that the Justice Department got a complaint filed against them because they're working with us, giving us more time to fix our ADA compliance. That's how, I mean, the people who are handicapped are dealing with this, they're filing complaints against the Justice Department because they're trying to give us more time to fix stuff. So, I just wanted to mention that to give you an idea with some of the stuff that we have to deal with, and it's crazy for us to deal with it. They don't care if we have money, they just want it done.
Any other comments from council?
If I could, please, Mayor.
Please.
And I don't want to respond to everybody, but I heard your points, and I, I have a response to a lot of different things, but I don't want to seem like I'm arguing with council. I love Jeff and Sandy with all my heart. I know that seems unprofessional, but I do. They are my neighbors for my business, they are my neighbors at home, and, you know, where I live, and I love them with all my heart. And it pains me to be, you know, seeming like I'm taking a position adverse to them or their interests. And it's a wonderful idea, and I get it. And it does, it must seem to them, like they said, that we are only paying attention to Allier now because of their proposal. I get it. I understand that. But, you know, I, it's just, it's very difficult, and there are so many points that have been made, especially by Mr. Howlett, that I will respond to during my attorney report, they're just flat out wrong, and are based on a complete misperception of fact and law. But again, I will respond to that during my attorney report. But yours is a wonderful proposal, and I don't mean to act like I'm a council person. I just, I, it does sound like they will consider this again, and I hope that you will, you know, give us your indulgence and your patience.
We're the ones that have been taking care of that alley for the last 13 years. Have you seen what kind of condition it's in now?
And that's why I said, you know, I think that, you know, Mr. Valentine will probably take a look at it and have his staff take a look at it and see how soon we can do something like that. And at that point in time, maybe we can take a second look at this, and if they want to bring their proposal forward, but that's what I'm seeing. So, we have a motion, and it...
Just make a point, you know, I understand your point about the 13 years, but you have to remember that none of these council members were then when they did that. So, we can't answer for what they did, but we can sure answer for what we want to do now. And if we need to get stuff fixed, and I, I think you'll see around town that we are doing a good job trying to get stuff done. And, and I, like I said, I think we could work with you, and I think it could work out. So, just be patient with us and that. And like I said, these are all new council members that have their heart in making Trinidad a better community and not hurting it. And I think you should understand that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on there. Call a vote, please.
Do you have a note?
Are we, excuse me, are we voting to... Huh? No, but are we voting to place this in... But I mean, are we going to vote for...
Kim, can you read the motion back, please? Do you have it?
Okay.
The mayor just called for a motion.
I just called for a motion for approval.
For approval, okay.
I would move that we table it.
Let's do one, and then I'm sorry.
Okay, let's go ahead and do this. We have a motion, you are making a motion to table.
That's what I was asking.
I would like to make a motion to table this consideration of revocable permit agreement as requested by Bella Luna for a future, to be determined.
Okay. Second, second here?
Second.
Okay, call the vote. Mr. Williamson.
Yes.
Mr. Goodall.
Yes.
Yes.
Aren't we supposed to have team calls?
I know. She's just lost her...
Someone who thought we got lost here.
That's right.
Continue on.
Tavano?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Greego?
No.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
I'd say no. The motion is five to two to table for further discussion. So, we have a motion on the floor to ask for approval. Do you want to rescind that motion?
At this time, I'd like to rescind my motion.
Okay. Second to rescind? Call a vote to rescind?
Tavano?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Greego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Uh, yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item 8B, resolution submission of a grant application to History Colorado to speak funding for the exterior rehabilitation of the Fox West Theater in furtherance of its eventual total rehabilitation for public use and enjoyment. Can I have a motion, please? So, moved. Have a second?
Second.
Discussion is, would that be you, Mr. Valentine, or would that be Ms. Clark?
No, that'd be me, Mayor. Thank you. As you know, we've gotten several grants, one from History Colorado and one from Department of Local Affairs to do the facade improvements on the Fox Theater. At the time, when we request full amounts, both granting agencies cut those in half. So, there's still work to be done over there. We're trying to get this grant to continue with the operations that's already set up, to scaffolding everything, and to get the complete facade repaired. This grant application would be, in our mind, favorable with the History Colorado because of what we've done so far. There is a $62,500 grant match attached with this. If you recall, council did put some grant match monies in the budget for occasions like this, so...
Do we still have plenty of money there, Mike? Do we still have plenty of money in that?
We do.
I know we've matched a queue.
We do. So, with that, I, this is working with Urban Neighborhoods and the Fox West Theater Alliance, who we have an agreement with to kind of procure and go after these grants, so, yeah.
Okay. Council, any questions?
I asked Illinois, and I wanted to make sure we still have plenty of funds available in our grant match that we put aside.
Hundred thousand. No further questions. Ogletree?
Are, is, are we doing the grant application, or is Urban Neighborhoods, who's writing it?
Actually, Urban Neighborhoods, Fox West Theater Alliance, that whole three-way, they're doing the application process. Stephanie Balkin with Urban Neighborhoods is well-versed in that application process. She's the one that wrote the last one, so...
Okay, that's my question.
No questions.
Mr. You?
Rusty asked, and you answered, so I'm good.
Kim?
No question, Ms. Gray.
How much did we set aside, and how much of that have we used? Are we at a point where we may need to reallocate some more of the marijuana money for grant matching?
It is at that point. We've set aside, we've done a $25,000 match in this one, and we had $100,000.
$100,000.
Maybe it's something we need to get you to bring back forward for us to get that through, Gregor.
Mike, just for curiosity, I thought that, I mean, kind of understood, like on the Fox, that we had to write the grant because we were the...
It, it will be, we're the owners.
Yeah, that's what I, I mean...
They're going through the process and submitting on the city's behalf, so...
Oh, okay, yeah.
It's like a grant writer.
I was going to stop.
We can write him a rest for one. We learned that when we went to class, remember, Karen? They taught us that, when we're sending diets, if you have to get up.
I don't remember when I ate for lunch.
I know, that's one of them, four years ago, but they said, "If the urge hits you, you don't ask for permission, you just get up and walk out." Actually, Donna, that is when we went to school, training for being on city council.
And you were eating bananas during council.
Many things you've got to come back.
Yes, that's the important thing, is you do have to come back. I tried to bring up those pictures. I don't know if you have the email stuff, Jeff and Sandy. I tried to bring it up, I can't open those pictures.
When you leave next time, write your vote down so you don't have to wait.
Sorry, fully by proxy.
Call a vote, please.
Tavano?
Where am I going? Oh, you don't get it, no. You don't get it. So, the Fox was... Sorry.
Goodall?
Yes.
Greego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Council reports, starting with Mr. Williamson.
I, uh, there I attended a public meeting on July twelfth where Dean Durand, Superintendent of Power and Life, brought up shortcomings within the Power and Light Department. The concern that I have is that Dean expressed there's an increased likelihood of failure due to years of deferred maintenance. In this age of fuel shortages, logistical shortcomings, and already existing power grid deficiencies, a substandard power grid is not optional. I feel strongly that because Dean gave his opinion and of his own free volition, we should have used the remaining time to further explore and determine the specific concerns he had. We didn't do that, so I would request that at our soonest opportunity, we as a city council have a work session where we can speak to Dean and that the veracity of these issues can be determined.
One of the things that, and I may be wrong, and council could probably direct me here, is that the retreat was brought forward with all the directors, and each was supposed to bring a strategic plan. And of course, he came forward, and I think that in a work session, would that be something that we could do, being that's personnel?
Well, I, I, I'm reluctant to answer. I, I mean, certainly, we would not want to discuss anything that would be related to personnel. And you're right, I get it that it would be hard to have a conversation about this without discussing personnel. I would just say that we have heard you, Councilor Williamson, and I, you know, perhaps we could follow up on this, and not putting you off, but follow up on this after, like, I have a chance to talk to you. And, and I'm not trying to, you know, say no, I just, after I have a chance to talk to you, there may be a better forum for discussing that matter. Not saying that I know, but there may be. So...
Mr. Valentine?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, I, I welcome the opportunity to discuss it with you at any time. No calls were made to me to question what was reported. So, um, we have been working on those issues, and welcome the opportunity to discuss that, but also, one-on-one with each of you to, you know, to discuss some.
And that has been...
I don't want to talk personnel, that's not in city council's purview.
Right.
Um, that's my charter.
Right.
Right.
We could talk about the issue of charges or whatever.
I specifically mentioned the condition of power.
Yeah, that's up to the, you can talk to us, Mr. Valentine. Anything else, Mr. Williamson?
Nothing else, Mayor.
Mr. Goodall?
So we did have Parks and Rec meeting last night, and pretty good meeting. One of the main issues they brought up, Mr. Valentine, is it seems to be we got a lot of kids, it appears, who are running through the Boulevard Edition with ATVs. And they're not riding on the trails, now they're going off the trails, they're going through the grass. And a lot have spent shell casings, forty-fives, we're not talking little caliber guns, where they're having some target practice. So it was asked of me to bring this up possibly, if we can get a little, a little more patrol through there. I know the police department is short-staffed, I know Chief Glorioso's working on remedying that, and it makes it hard to put somebody on the River Walk in, in the Boulevard Edition. But I think with the ATVs off of trails destroying the habitat and the, and the shell casings, we definitely need to get someone in there to occasionally, to see if we can catch who's doing this and put a stop to it. We put a lot of time and effort and money into that, and it is a beautiful area to be destroyed by some kids on ATVs. Other than that, you know, they're working on some signage there at Robinson and Alta, is that what it is?
Mm-hmm.
For Boulevard Edition, like we've done for the Warm Hole Loop and stuff. But it seemed like Jared is, was working with the engineering or whoever's making the signs, and they're, they're seem to be handling that. But that was the gist of, of the meeting last night. Pickleball always comes up, Jared answered all the questions for that. I mean, I guess we're getting a lot of people wanting to play pickleball, and they're asking about the courts over by Noah's Ark, and so... That's all I have.
Mr. Ogletree?
Neither one of the boards that I'm a liaison to met this last month, so I don't have a report from them. I would say, though, that I agree with what Councilman Williamson said. I will follow up with you, Mr. Valentine, and if you'd like to talk to the things that he raised or concerns. Oh, there's one more thing. The Trinidad Triggers situation with their storage, I just, that's come up this last week, that they've been burglarized now, I think four times or something. But I just would like to know what we're doing, if anything, about that.
Sure. We only have two police reports. Again, another Facebook explosion. And lights have been up, they, they are on. So, uh, we've looked at the situation, looking at whether we lock the park at night. That would lock the walkers out. The walkers ask for lights around the trail so they could walk in the evening, so they wouldn't have a place to park. So we're, we're looking at all options on that.
What about cameras in that area?
We have a camera, it's three sixty, so it doesn't get it. We do have photos of person that was in the batting cage, but hoodie and unrecognizable, so...
The bike was recovered.
Recovered the bike.
Thank you.
My neighbor was supposed to come today, but I guess for some reason he got tied up. But we've getting kind of a really bad issue over on Colorado and Nevada. People are putting their garage sale signs there, and people are just pulling in, they, I mean, they're definitely gonna cause an accident. And I think that's illegal to put anything on our poles, because that's what they're doing. And I wish somehow or another we could govern that, but if the police go by, or, I mean, I'd walk out there and tear the signs off, because it, it really is a hazard there.
Well, not only that, they don't even park right. They just, they're just parallel or perpendicular to the pole, and idling their car, getting out and just taking their sweet time. I, I see that all the time, it's like, my dad's right there, yeah.
It's terrible. I mean, somebody's gonna get hurt there, and it shouldn't be that way, anyway. I, you know, I would think, maybe the, the city or get together with signage or someone put a chaos or whatever you call it, I'm sorry, pronouncing that chaos, kiosk somewhere, that people could actually post a sign where, where people could see it, instead of having them all over town. And maybe we could put something in a paper that you're not supposed to put them on town, and post them somewhere where we can do that. And, and that would be something that I think worthwhile doing.
Kiosk of chaos.
Chaos, chaos is worthwhile. Actually, say it over there.
He is the king of chaos.
Anything else, sir?
No, that's it.
Mr. Speaker?
I had a meeting with the Historic Main Street Board today. Well, actually, they had the meeting, I had a dental appointment when I came. The meeting was over, really, but, I'm sorry. But there was a report given, Fourth of July, it was over at Central Park, went over well. I mentioned to the board that maybe we should try and do more kid-friendly events during that, because it seems like the kids really got a good kick out of it. And Penny got a lot of good feedback on it. I'm also the liaison for the Chamber of Commerce. They're not gonna have their meeting until tomorrow morning at four o'clock, so I can't give you the recording of that. And I'll let you talk about Landina.
Mr. Goodall? Landina?
Yeah.
Yeah, Kim Schultz also messaged me the night that the bike was, well, the area was broken into and the bike was stolen, even before it blew up on Facebook. But other than that, Colonel Sempleman's supposed to come up to the radio station, have an interview about the second half grant, uh, application process that's gonna take place. I think it's after the twenty-third, the deadline is the twenty-third, right?
Something like that.
Okay.
July?
And, yeah, July. Had a great interview with Joe DeHart, CDOT resident engineer, Exit Eleven I twenty-five restructuring project. He gave a great overview about what's gonna take place. And it was really good, and I shared that, I sent the email to everybody. I was emcee for a part of the night for Sunday for Citro Blandian's performances. I mean, just what an amazing place. They did a great job. And I interviewed Jessica Huckman from across the street. I'm gonna try to put on the radio so you can get some donations to help the library out. And just, you know, convey it to the public and just say, you know, we need some help, like, I think it was state in the paper also.
There was an article in the paper.
So, three, four times in the morning, I'll say, come on, let's help. This is our library, this is, you know, come on, we can't let it just, whatever they say.
Mr. Mayor, what's up?
Go ahead. Are you done?
Yes, sir.
You're...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I forgot about, the mayor and I and Mike were at the groundbreaking for Exit Eleven. That's gonna be huge, because the traffic in that area is unbelievable. But my part of the report is, I got a minute or two to talk to Governor Polis, and I know he and his partner are huge animal advocates. They love animals. I, I kind of found that out. But I mentioned to Governor Polis that we'd like either him or somebody, or his partner to come down when we open the animal shelter. And he asked me how it began, and a little history about it, and I just gave, I know he's, he was very busy, I just gave him a very quick overview. But he said, if I do not come back for the grand opening, next time I'm in Trinidad, I want to see the animal shelter. So, I thought that was good.
In all states, it's about Governor Polis. He has been, just like Governor Hickeluper, when he was, they've both been very big advocates for Trinidad, what they've done. And Governor Polis was here this last weekend as well. And of course, I had an opportunity to, goodness, talk to him a bit. But every time I talk to him, he's always been very, very good to talk to.
Yes.
Very pro-Tunida. As a matter of fact, I told him, I think we're gonna have to make you a citizen of Trinidad.
I told him we're gonna adopt him.
Anyway, he's, he's done some good things for us. You know, also, several people were here from CDOT. Jean was there, I forget what the gentleman's name is, I was sure that night.
Rich Zamora.
Rich Zamora, and also CDOT Director, Shoshana Lou was there as well. The Colonel Matthew Packard was there from the Colorado State Police, was there also. And so anyway, it was kind of nice, it was very short and quick, because we both had, we had to get down to Citro Blandian Park real quick. So anyway, that went off real well, that was good to see. You know, somebody brought up the ATV signage down on the Boulevard, or ATVs. Do we have signs down there about ATVs not allowed?
No, but when we did the design, they moved the parking blocks that we put so that they couldn't get through. They actually figured out how to get around the boulders.
They're moving the boulders.
Yes.
They are moving them, them giant boulders, somehow, they're moving them.
So...
And going around.
You know, I, you know, the retreat that we had, I, I felt was a success. And one thing about, you know, mentioned earlier about communication, and anytime that we have a meeting, it is open to the public, whether it's virtual, or in this case, like tonight, anyone that wants to participate, or you can come. Even when we had our retreat, we had to post that, so that the public, the public wanted to go and sit there and listen to what we were discussing, and they were welcome to it. So just wanted to make sure that the public is well-known, again, that they are able to come and listen anytime we have an open meeting. That's not an issue. So I also attended Citro Blandian opening, and it was a beautiful, beautiful park. And I think it's a huge amenity for Trinidad. There were three bishops that were there, the current bishop, there was a bishop, current bishop from Colorado Springs, and a bishop emeritus was here. There was all, there were also three or four other priests, there were five or six nuns that were here, and just people that came from all over the state. So, there were probably, what, two hundred fifty people or at least somewhere, at least that. But it was nice, it was hot, but it was nice.
Yeah.
I also had a, an interview last week with the Denver Post on that CSU connection. Remember, I had mentioned that I had, during one of the Act Twenty-two meetings that I attended, that I talked with Cathay Reynolds, and we had a meeting with College CPW, Crystal Dryly, and also, the guy that has the river bottom down here, takes you in the river area, and see what kind of connections, and they are working on something. The college is working on a class that they'll offer a bachelor's degree in, in some biology class. And, like I said, they're, they're making some advances in working with CSU, or some classes down here, I guess. So that's gonna be, something that's gonna be good.
I'm sorry, you're talking about Trinidad State?
Yeah, Trinidad State, yeah, Trinidad State. Julie Knutson, by fact, was the other person that was part of it. And she is working with them on, on something herself. Also attended the tourism board meeting, and they continue to try and market the city of Trinidad in this area, so they're doing a good job. Today also had a virtual meeting with the Colorado Leadership Collaborative from the Betsy Foundation. And they asked prior to what our particular, what we want to talk about, there were sixty-five people on this meeting, and of course, they had different chat rooms. And I put in there, I just wanted to see what other people were, in other communities were thinking about it, about housing. And housing is just unbelievably ridiculous in other parts of the state as to what's happening. Some people are welcoming short-term rentals, other people are saying that short-term rentals are kind of interfering with their, their long-term rentals, and also just housing as, you know, as a whole. And other people are welcoming it. So it's just a matter, it's kind of a, somewhere yes and somewhere no. But they're all going through the same problems with the cost of housing. One particular area was saying last year, this was up in the mountains somewhere, the cost for per square foot was three hundred and fifty dollars per square foot, and is now up to like four hundred and sixty dollars a square foot. So basically, a fifteen hundred square foot house is almost non-affordable. So it's, it's really, really gotten bad, and they are at a, they're in a quandary as to what to do as well. Because housing for workforce housing, housing for just people in general is just becoming so very difficult.
I did see them report on the news this morning, I was watching early, that for the first time, they've had an increase in listings in the Colorado Springs area. So they're starting to see a shift on shortage of houses, and they're having more houses that are, that are available that are being bought. So maybe we'll see that market hopefully start to correct a set.
I think it was in the tally ride market, I think that the person that spoke was saying they were short, I don't know, a couple hundred homes, two, two hundred homes, about that. So it's like, anyway, just wanted to mention that, you know, and I asked him about incentives, and he really had any thoughts about incentives. They just... Mr. Valentine?
Thank you, men, and members of council. I, I really don't have much to report. What I was going to suggest is that we skip the work session on July twenty-sixth, since we had a full day retreat, and you pretty much heard all this. I've got several issues, Aliyah... I've got several issues, Allier and the Power and Light discussion to prepare for. And also Debbie Wagner has a report that she would like to present on August 9th on all the legislation she tracked for us during the session. So if council doesn't have any, anything pressing for July 26th, give staff some time to prepare for these other, these other issues.
I don't have an issue. I don't have an issue.
No.
Anybody in council have issues?
There you are.
That's all I have. Mr. Downs? So thank you, Mayor and council members. I want to, you know, like I said, I want to comment on anyone telling you, you should comment on what you discuss in executive session. That's illegal, patently, categorically, without exception. And so, and I'm sorry for raising my voice, but it is especially galling to me that anyone accuses you of a lack of leadership for not commenting on what you can't comment on. And I, I don't know if that comment was directed at you, Mayor, or any members of council, but it is completely illegal for any of you to comment on anything that goes on in executive session. The purpose of executive session is so that you can have a free, full, and fair exchange of ideas and never have anything attributed to you for what goes on in executive session. The reason why they are helpful is because they are confidential. You all know that no decisions can be made in executive session. You all know everything that I am saying to you, but I have to now educate the media. But I want to say this too, and this is one of the reasons why I'm so mad. I have information that multiple members of our local media, not Mr. Murphy, multiple members of the local media contacted members of council and asked you individually to comment on what happened on the executive session. And this is all regarding Bella Luna. So I'm not going to go any further down that. But get it, get it. You can't comment on executive session. I would lose my license to practice...
Recording in progress.
I always get the... But I, I would lose my license to practice law if I commented on anything that happened in executive session. We post it and we keep it general and we do that for a reason and we go no further. And none of you can go any further. Staff that participates in the executive session can go no further. And I sure as hell can go no further. But if any of you were to do that, you would really have legal liability. So it's just, again, galling to me that people stand up here and say, why don't you comment on executive session? Why don't you do it? So that is one thing that I guess I can respond to that was on social media. Is that you guys should be commenting on what happens in executive session. And I hope that ship will sail and that people will never expect you to do that again because you can't. No deliberative body can ever, if you have an executive session. And they do it on all levels of government and it's never, ever allowable for any participants to comment on what is discussed in there. Thank you. I'm sorry for getting wound up. I just, I wanted to say that. Yes, ma'am. Just wanted to say one thing in addition to that. There are times that we'll have an executive session on a particular issue. When we get in executive session, it is strictly discussion amongst ourselves. No decisions are made. If there is a decision to be made, it is posted in our agenda that we will come out and vote on that particular item. That is, that is true. But that's the only time.
May I make a comment as well, Mr. Downs?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, you know, really, if you stop and think about or go back and look at the number of executive sessions that this council has, it's very minimal. And we do that for a reason.
That's true. As a matter of fact, that's one of the things I talked to Mr. Downs about this and that I read this multiple times in multiple places. SERSA, our insurance company, says the lesser amount of executive sessions off you that you have, the better off you are. Because like you say, the more executive sessions that you have, then it starts to raise a question of what decisions are they making. But, and I, I understand that and I think that is a public perception issue. And I would tell you that I would much rather have you informed, get legal advice, and know what your options are from a legal standpoint than say, oh, I don't want to have an executive session because the optics are bad. You know, I, if I confirm with any client that is absolutely confidential, and I have to take that to my grave. And you, when you're in executive session, you, you can't discuss that. I mean, so it's a very helpful tool. And, and to suggest or insist that you should be commenting on what goes on in executive session is just a real misapprehension of, of the law, with all due respect. Anything else?
I, you know, I really wanted to be at Sister Blandina's in the groundbreaking, but I did have a... We, we lost a family member this weekend and I wasn't able to attend. So I do, most people already know, but so that's why I wasn't present. I, I did have a chance to go by Sister Blandina Park and Carl was there and whatnot and we walked through. What a beautiful thing. And, and I just wanted to say, sorry, I couldn't make it, but I did have an emergency, so I couldn't.
Our condolences to your family.
Yeah. Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up a little bit on, on what you're saying about communication. Everything that you're saying obviously is correct about executive session. But I do think that as a city, we could do a better job communicating what's going on, making the website easier to figure out what, what are the topics that we're looking at for the week. When I go on our website, I have a hard time finding them. And that should be something that's easy for people to pull up. The agenda should be something that is very easy to get to. So people know what we're talking about and then if they're interested, they can come and watch the deliberations.
Our new communications person, if she hasn't been on that long, anyway, ask her, Mike, call if she needs to.
It's probably been a month and a half now.
So she's, so she's new?
Yeah, she's brand new. It's a position we created to get, get this kind of communication out, so, yeah.
So that, that'll help the communication gap there, if it exists. Okay. Any other comments? On to item 11, executive session where conference with the city's attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS section 24-6-402 for B. Status, status of existing municipal contracts. Motion to go into executive session.
Salute.
Second.
Second.
Call a vote.
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Greego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Let's go ahead and take a final break.
Mayor, you're not going to come on to whatever you're...
No.
Okay.